July 17th, 2023, City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Tim Allison, Chaplain and Bereavement Coordinator for the Visiting Nurses Association. And so he's going to give the invocation. And then please stand for the invocation and then for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Tim? Is Tim here? Are we seeing Tim Allison? All right, anybody want to step in? Sure. Yep, just right here at the dais. And please state your name again, please, or we'll hear it.
My name is Joe Nicola. Let's pray. Father, we are so grateful, thankful that we live in a great city. And God, we ask for your wisdom, your insight. And we need it, Father. We need you so desperately. Thank you for this council. Thank you for the mayor. Thank you for all the city leaders. Father, may everything we do and everything we say bring glory to your name. Amen.
And Joe, I've got to ask, so which group are you with? Because that sounds like you're a pro, so...
I pastor New Covenant Ministries. Been here for 24 years over here in Independence.
Very good. Thank you. Well done. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we have our citizens' requests. But can I have a motion for... Oh, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. Then we'll do the citizen's request, sorry.
Fears?
Fears?
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
McCandless?
Here.
Steinmeyer?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here. And I also want to introduce DeeDee Meyer. This is her first City Council meeting. She is filling in and as the interim, and we are delighted to have you here. So, thank you very much. And so be very kind because she's nervous and we all know what that's like to be the city clerk the first time at a meeting. We all know that. With that being said, I need a motion to allow non-citizens to speak for citizen's requests.
I've moved to suspend the rules and allow non-residents to speak.
Thank you. We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears? Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And Councilmember Fears, thank you. When you vote, you've got to turn your camera on, so...
Yep. I'm sorry, I was hit the wrong button first.
No worries. Thank you. Okay. We have citizens' requests. And the first citizen is Walter Capps. Walter, you've spoken on this issue before, so you've got two minutes.
All right. My name's Walter Capps. This issue that I'm seeking on is the issue of employment in the city for the most part. So, I personally have been, you know, searching for a job for about two months now on my own. I've applied to everything that I could apply to on the square. I applied to every job possible in the city. And it's been difficult receiving interviews. I go back, I've been checking up, you know, doing everything you're supposed to do. And I know this is a very similar situation that a lot of people have. You know, and it's kind of hard to, you know, get anything done, you know, for yourself if you're not able to have stable employment, to receive any income, to pay for expenses, such as bills or even rent where you're staying. I'm lucky enough to have my one living family member, my aunt, to help me out. But that's all I have at the moment. You know, most of my family's dead, and I know there's a lot of these people where, for other reasons, you know, they don't have their, you know, they don't have friends or family that's able to help them, or if they do have friends, you know, their friends are basically in the same boat that they are in. You know, they're struggling, they're working their butts off to pay the bills, and they simply can't afford to take in their friends. So, it's just something that I'd like to talk about because I've actually been trying. You know, I very much would like to have a good, stable job. I've gone down to CSO, folk rehab, and I've been waiting to hear back for a good while, and I just haven't heard anything from them. That's all I really want to mention. Thank you very much for letting me speak, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Also, I was remiss in not recognizing two elected officials here that are not part of the dais, and so I want to certainly recognize both of you tonight. So, Sean Smith, who is a county legislator, is going to speak in a moment. But I certainly want to recognize you as elected official. And then Aaron McMullin, you are a state representative, and I wanted to recognize you for being here as elected officials also. So, I didn't want to be remiss in missing that, so thank you for being here, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say. So, thank you. The next person to speak is Aaron McMullin. So, Aaron, come on up, and you've got five minutes. And please state your address too, please.
My name is Aaron McMullin. I live at 1804 South Sioux Court. Greetings, Mayor and Independent City Council. My name is Aaron McMullin. I represent roughly about 28,000 people in the city of Independence, Missouri, and the State House of Representatives. Moreover, I'm a citizen of Independence and care for my community greatly. In my capacity as a representative, I've received dozens of emails and phone calls from constituents beside themselves due to recent property tax increases. The property tax increase hurts the most vulnerable parts of our population, the disabled, the retired, and the poor. Property owners are not the only people to suffer from these increases, as people who live with leases will already have and already will have their rental rates increased as raised property taxes have been passed on to them. I have the unique perspective of working on the Special Committee on Tax Reform and have voted to pass every property tax decrease, including Senate Bill 190. We need to act and put as much pressure on Jackson County to enact Senate Bill 190 and also uncover any malpractice concerning the new property tax increases on behalf of the citizens of Independence. I can speak without a doubt in my mind that people of Independence want us to exercise all possible remedies on their behalf to provide relief for these burdensome tax increases. Challenging taxes such as these is ingrained in American culture, starting with the Boston Tea Party to the revolutionary cry of no taxation without representation. Therefore, I support the Most Honorable General Lynn from the Third District's Resolution 23764 and 23765, and ask for your support as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Representative. Appreciate it. Next is all elected official from Jackson County Legislature. Sean, you are next up, and you have five minutes. And please state your address.
I don't know if I want everybody to know my address.
I'm sorry, what?
I was just joking, saying I don't think I want everybody to know my address.
It's sunshineable.
I know. Everything about me is public these days, including the value of my property, thanks to the Kansas City Star.
There you go.
So, my name is Sean Smith. I live at 1516 Southwest Hedgewood Lane in Lee Summit, Missouri. I come here today as your, well, not your, but an elected representative on the Jackson County Legislature, and I certainly want to speak in favor of 23764 and 23765. In my position as a Jackson County legislator... By the way, the only notes I needed was for the numbers of the resolutions. In my position as a Jackson County legislator, I have, of course, been contacted by, I will say, thousands of concerned citizens who received their reassessment notices with indications of massive increases. I've spent the last several weeks learning more about how computer-assisted modeling to do mass appraisals worked than I ever would have thought necessary in an elected role. I come to that ability to understand that based on my professional career of 25 years in technology, information systems, and really having a deep understanding of similar tools, albeit for different purposes. I can say that in going through things in detail, that with over 100,000 properties, residential properties, out of the 300,000 presented to us by statute by the assessor, that increased by more than 50, with a 5-0 percent, that the increase, the number of properties that were increased and the associated increases are massive and overwhelming. The question of mathematics of how those values were derived is very, very different than probably most people would understand and probably well beyond my ability to discuss in this brief period. But I will say it represents a problem. It represents a solution, in a way, to decades of neglect on the part of the county where our assessed values required under state law were probably not correct. So, the math, the one thing I will say about it, and then I will move off of the math, tries to derive what the value of property is based on various attributes. And success, according to the vendor, is 15% of property owners appealing. Right now, we're at 38,000 appeals that have been requested by citizens, and that represents about 12%. For me, 12%, with some of those ranging all the way up to 400, 500, 600%, doesn't feel like or look like success. Therefore, I certainly have been supportive at the county level of any remedy we can find that's lawful. I will go so far as to say if the courts need to intervene, which is to be determined, those solutions probably won't be very attractive either. But the reality is that even if the math was perfect, we also have a solution to remedy things, which is the appeal process, which has also been imperfect. Many citizens have reported, and I've personally witnessed calling to get help and being on hold for hours. That's if the phone call goes through. And then, after hours on hold, being told you're next, your call will be answered next, and then being disconnected. This was even done live by the media, and they had the same result. So, there's no question that the solution for those property owners who have been inaccurately assessed on the upside is very much...
And you've got one minute.
...been a problem, right? So, both with the math and with the solution to the bad math, which is supposed to be the appeal process, both have had a significant problem. We did pass a resolution as a county legislative group, asking the county executive to step in and place a cap on the increases while the accuracy of those things continues to be determined. That would have benefits for both taxing entities like yourself in terms of your ability to forecast what your revenue's going to be and set your levy rate properly, and to the citizens who are currently panicked and thinking that they may very well be looking at losing their homes because they can't afford their property taxes. So, I will encourage you to take all actions, and as I said, I support the resolutions that have been presented to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Richard, welcome this evening. Please state your address, and you've got five minutes, my friend.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Richard McKee. I live at 3804 Hayden Drive. I have lived there for 18 years, next to Sycamore Hills Park. We lost power on Friday at 4:20 p.m., and it was restored about 5:30 a.m. on Saturday. I just want to say a thank you to IPL workers. They were out there at 2:30 a.m. A tree from city property next to the creek, behind 3808, which is right next door to me, had hit the power lines. If you go north from the park along the creek, running up to 39th Street, which is city property along the creek, there is much overgrowth of trees and weeds. A neighbor of mine, a resident of 55 years, has asked Parks and Rec for several years about the erosion and overgrowth next to the creek. It could have been just an act of God, or needed maintenance may have stopped it. Please check into needed maintenance, other than mowing, in our city parks. Lots of neighbors use our local park. Thank you.
Next, we have Jaclyn Davy. Jaclyn, and please state your address, and then you've got five minutes.
I'm Jaclyn Davis. I live at 1725 Harvard Avenue, Independence, 64052. I'm not here about the taxes. I'm here to find out if there's any way that the city could have, like, big dump trucks to pick up some of the brush and stuff that has fallen in people's yards. It's very hard for a lot of people to get to that Vista Avenue address, and a lot of people, especially older people, they don't have pickup trucks and stuff like that. Kansas City does that. Kansas City has trucks, and they pick them up. They're going to stop picking up theirs up on Monday, and I just thought surely we must have some big dump trucks here in Independence that maybe we could do that in the future. It sure would be a benefit to the people. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And yes, my taxes did go up too. I'd like to sell it to whoever thinks it's worth that much.
And do you do comedy this weekend anywhere, anyplace? I need to go see you. But we do have this week, tree damage across the city, and we will have a free storm debris drop-off. So, it's not a pickup, but if you can get it and drop it off on Wednesday, July 19, from 8 a.m. to 8 p.m., and then Saturday, July 22, from 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. at 875. That's 875 Vista Avenue for our residents. So, that's at least one solution on that. So, very, very good. Let's see, Deborah. How do we say the last name Deborah is?
Win.
Win? Okay. And if I could ask you, Deborah, there's just a couple of things to be filled out that you agree to follow the rules. If you could initial these down there?
Sure.
I would be very, very grateful.
Yeah.
Just these right here.
Oh.
It just basically says you're going to follow the rules and...
Exactly.
But I have no doubt that you will do that.
My name's Deborah Win. I live at 2329 Viking Drive, and we've lived in Independence for probably 32 years. And the father of my children, my ex-husband, is Vietnamese. He came from north, not south. We never even knew that he was categorized as a transnational terrorist till, yeah. Anyway, we split up like 13 years ago, and I now live at 64057, near Lucy, who used to be on student council, and there was a Jackson County judge that retired.
So, let me just clarify. Is your address 2329 Viking Drive?
Yep, 64057.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I didn't have you say it earlier, and so thank you.
Yeah, and when Vinnie and I bought our home here in Independence, it was a VA repo. I grew up in real estate. We were trying to get the best deal. I didn't understand, as God is my witness, we didn't mean to pour salt in anyone's wounds over the darn war. We just was looking for the best deal when it came to the house. I used to work for disabled American veterans before I ever met Vinnie, and all of our donations went to DAV. When I was, when we were married, I started volunteering in kindergarten because I worked nights and I couldn't see my kids. And then I believed that I was an inspiration to other moms, because I did have a monopoly on the whole month, and then the other moms started volunteering. I discovered embezzlement by my boss. My boss thought I was some party girl from the hood, and he hired me in accounting, and I worked in the legal field, and I busted him. I was celebrating a promotion when I met their father. Once, there was a girl who, a teenage girl, I believe she was 15, she got kidnapped from, across from William Christman, and they found her, thank the Lord, and she was alive. I couldn't sleep, and I told the girl's dad I had to get up and go help find her. I went back to work the next day in the accounting department, and we were all ladies, and we were listening, and they found her, and we dropped everything we were doing, and thank the Lord, they found her. Kids hung out at our house. One time, their dad removed the leaf from the kitchen table, and I said, "No, Vinnie, the girls are going to be getting older. We want to know who in the world they're hanging out with." The next day, he put the leaf back in the table. Us three went to church, me, Natalie, and Cicely. I could never get him to go to church. We got a boat, and I blame it on the boat. We never had date nights because we were news junkies, and we heard bad things about babysitters and things like that, so we never had date nights. We did once go to go see the movie Aviator, and we went out to dinner first, and then we went to the movies. It was a packed house at Independence Commons. I was explaining to their Vietnamese dad what happened when he went to the concession stand during the movie. This woman got smart aleck with me. She popped me in my cheek. I come from the urban core. I had four brothers, no sisters. Everything I did growing up in my formative years, I paid my debt to society. But she hit me. The police officer wouldn't let me press charges, so I...
You have one minute.
Oh, well, then I'm going to have to come back for sure. I ended up, my girlfriends at AT&amp;T said, "Debbie, we'll go to court with you." And I go, "No, I'm going to do it the honest way, and come find out it doesn't work that way for me and my family in this city." My aunt, we have Seminole Indian on my side of the family, my dad's side. My aunt started hearing CB radio waves coming out of her ears, and this was around the time Cicely was born, my youngest, in '95. They went from doctor to doctor. She ended up, she died a very slow, painful death, and she was at home when she passed away.
Deborah, I'm sorry, but your time has expired. Just why I apologize.
That's cool. I'll be back.
Thank you.
I'm going to add, I'm tired of being, I'm tortured in my house, and I call the police, and the police don't do anything. Nobody sees anything, and a person can only take so much before they have to scream. It's too much.
Okay. Thank you.
God bless everybody.
Next is Jaclyn Davy. Jaclyn?
No, I already did it.
Oh, you already did it. We're there. That's all of them. Okay. Jaclyn, please forgive me, I took you out of...
One wasn't enough.
I was just looking for more humor. You did a great job on the humor, so I was just looking for more of that.
I didn't want you to hit me with the...
That won't happen. Can we do it later? Now's fine? Okay. Do you want to make your remarks first, or you may make my remarks? Okay. Well, what we're going to do right now, since Dan Montgomery's, this is his last City Council meeting. And I have known Dan for probably the majority of the 40 years that you've worked here. And you're much beloved by your employees. They think you do a great job. I was incredibly impressed when we did the tour of the Water Department facilities, your thorough knowledge and understanding, and how friendly and kind you were to all of your friends that work at the city. So, I just want to say congratulations. I wish you the best in retirement. I know Diane will probably have something for you to do, so you're not there all the time. Would that be fair to say?
Yes.
It's a good thing you're on the way out. No, but with that, Dan and I go to the same church. I found out that this was actually his last meeting on Sunday, as he was handing me communion. He says, "Monday is my last day." I went to Mr. Kovar, and I said, "Mr. Kovar, was that mixing church and state?" And he says, "Absolutely." So, this was your last meeting regardless, okay? So, with that, we want to honor you. Come on up, we'll get some pictures, and Adam may say something at the end. Is that right, Adam?
Yeah, just while he's walking up here. You think about 40 years, that's probably about 900 City Council meetings that he's been to during the course of his career, which is pretty extraordinary. And personally, I just really respect you, Dan, and we are definitely going to miss you.
Before the mayor presents this, Mr. Hobart always says that you've been here since they invented water. So, I don't know if that's actually true, but my appreciation and gratitude to you for bringing on new council people and teaching us what we needed to know about the water system and the utilities. Thank you.
Dr. McCandless is quite capable on her own.
And Dan, if you didn't see it, Jared was actually clapping on the video for you, so he did that. That brings us to Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Are there any councilmembers who wish to pull out items individually for discussion?
Resolution 23-763, please.
Let me get to the resolutions. Okay. 23763. Very good. Anyone else want to pull anything out? Okay. Very good. With that, let's go ahead and approve the consent items, minus 23763. So, if there's no other further discussions or questions, Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
And that's yes, and the Consent Agenda is approved, seven to zero. Dr. McCandless, you have the floor in discussing 23763.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And if you could do a favor first, please, I always forget this, please make a motion to approve it. We'll get a second, we'll get that out of the way, and then we'll have you discuss.
Motion to approve 23763.
Thank you.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Councilmember, you're free to proceed.
Thank you. This resolution is authorizing an agreement with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Bargaining Unit, so the WPC Local Union 53, for the term of July 17, 2023, through June 30, 2026. This resolution, and I will ask for clarification if I misunderstand this, is to discuss... Well, let me back up. So, the council has approved a process for us to look at IPL. What does it cost to maintain? What would happen if the city sold that? A very complicated set of questions with a lot of considerations, including considerations for the people who are our current employees, both what it takes to be a good... Both what it takes to be a good employer to them, as well as what would happen if the city ended up choosing to sell. So something not to be taken lightly by anyone. And I appreciate that we have set up the process for a really in-depth discussion of, of what's important to everybody. Everybody needs to turn their lights on. What does that mean to have a high-quality, affordable system for people to have electricity? This resolution just feels premature. We have not had our report yet from our outside consultants. And so I just am thoughtful about things that I don't know, the financial or the fiscal implications and the legal implications for the city. That just makes me take pause. So I'm, I'm happy for thoughts from my other council members.
Councilmember. I think you've mistook this for the one further down.
Oh, excuse me.
I will let you talk again. No, that's not a problem.
This is, this is, no worries.
No, this is the, excuse me.
Yes, there are two local 53 items on the agenda. They're very close together on the agenda.
Save that thought.
I will do that.
Of course. For clarification, 23-763 is the contract that's been bargained for with the city manager's office and water pollution control employees.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. Easy enough to confuse, certainly on the agenda. So I'm assuming we're ready to proceed and vote on this item.
Yes.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Very good. Any further discussion on 23-763?
You need to move for approval?
Uh, we've already got that.
It's been moved and seconded.
Yeah. I've switched it up. I've had them do it on the front end because I forget sometimes, councilmembers, so it's, I'm trying to make the process easier for my older brain to be able to follow through. So thank you, my friend. But, but thanks for being there for me. I appreciate that. All right. Any one of the discussion on this item? We've got a motion in a second. Any other further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 23-763.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 23-763 from the consent agenda is in fact approved. And that brings us to the regular agenda. There are no public hearings today, so we've got non-ordinance items. And Madam City Clerk, you can proceed with reading the very first non-ordinance item. 23-764.
23-764, a resolution directing the city...
Get the microphone really close.
Sorry. I am kind of loud, though.
That's okay.
A resolution directing the city manager to consult with the city councillor to explore joining the class action lawsuit filed against Jackson County et al relating to 2023 property tax assessment.
Very good. Any discussion on this item? Madam?
So I've already embarrassed myself once, so I'll step into it again. I just have concerns about whether we have standing to be able to join a lawsuit against another branch of government. And I'm sure that this resolution, which is to consult with the city councillor, that will be one of the aspects that you take into consideration if this motion passes, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I, um, this resolution is a result of, of many, many phone calls that we received and they, they kind of started like this, all of them. I know there's nothing you can do because you weren't involved in this process, but people were frustrated. They were somewhat nervous. They had heard the stories and they felt like they weren't getting anywhere. They were making phone calls. They, they weren't getting responses. And while we're just this municipality in this county, we're still elected representatives of people who are feeling like they are, well, they're very asset. The most important thing to them is being threatened. And there are times where we, as elected officials, have to remind ourselves that government is not entitled to your assets. You really are not. And taxing jurisdiction, the taxing authorities in certain jurisdictions are given by the people. And, and there, that means there's a sense of responsibility that goes with that. And I, I sat long and hard and thought about this, but what I wanted to do was give us the, the opportunity to stand with the residents that we represent. Whether we had anything to do with it or not, we are still elected officials and we still represent, for me, the 3rd district. But I, I, I love this entire city. And I have learned a great deal about this process. And I want to tell you, I am as disappointed in this process as I've ever been. Not surprised, but disappointed. And, you know, I, I have now had the opportunity, the privilege to talk to a few of the legislators, a few state representatives. And the thing that troubles me is that no one seems to have any type of solution. And when I would say, ask questions like, "Well, what are you going to do to help fix this?" Then the question was always brought back to me, "Well, what do you suggest?" Well, I have a lot of suggestions. The problem is I don't have the ability to make those suggestions and to see any action taken upon them. The thing that I do know is that when we hear about this process, what, what I've heard is that it's, you know, there may be a ripple effect in our economy. I'm going to tell you something, it's not a ripple. It's going to be a monsoon. The, the fact is that when you get into the inequitable assessments that we're seeing, when you see the things that are happening to elderly people who are on very fixed incomes and they're wondering where they're going to come up with 20, 30, 40% more, what do they give up? I've received those phone calls, so that's why I'm, I'm saying that to you. I've received the phone calls from the kids that said, "You know, my mom is on $1,100 fixed income. What does she give up?" She's not getting a raise. She gave up her prescriptions. She gave up utilities, which are now 6% higher. Does she give up food? Without her son, she's going to be homeless. That's what will happen, is there will be a lot of that going on. And if you think that it's only happening to homeowners and renters, you're, you're escaping it, well, guess what? We have a friend who has 48 rental units and across the board is a 90% increase in his assessments, 90%. So you calculate that with his insurance, rents are probably going to go up 30 to 40%. Think about that. That's going to create such economic hardships and there'll be inequities. And so don't for one second think that this is not a big deal and it'll work itself out. This is a big deal. And it's time for us to make a stand, and that's why I brought this resolution forward. I don't know what our city can do, but by golly, I trust our city councillor that he's going to look into it. And if there are aspects of this assessment that were not done properly or even illegally, then the county should be held accountable for that. That's my, that's my charge of what I'd like for Mr. Coover to look into. And, and I know that we're just looking for the same treatment. We want to be treated right. We want our assets to be protected. And one day, you know what? We may even get to own something and not have to rent it back from the county. That's my hope. So I hope that this is something that you understand. I'm not saying go jump into a lawsuit. Let's look at this process and let's figure out if something's wrong, let's make sure we find out what it was and that it doesn't happen again. Then let's work with our state reps that took the time to come out tonight and let's try to figure out some solutions for this. So I hope that my colleagues will vote for this and stand with the people of this city.
All right. I understand this issue is a big issue. I understand you're angry. I understand your emotions. We are not going to disrespect the process of a body having a meeting. Now, I don't want to do this, but if it happens again, we will remove people that I have seen that have collapsed.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Please.
I'm sorry.
You think I've gone too far?
With all due respect.
Okay. I will withdraw my statement and we'll move on. Thank you, sir. Good point.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, thank you, sir. Please proceed.
I, I've had similar phone calls and conversations and, and I'm personally affected by the assessment issue as well. I have a different question for Mr. Coover, if I could.
Please proceed.
My, my question is really, this is, my understanding is this is, we're just exploring this as, as an option and I'm assuming, and so am I correct that if you determined that it was an option, because I have similar concerns as to our standing as Councilmember McCandless stated, if you did find out that there was an opportunity to do that in your research, would you come back to us in an executive session? Is that how that we would, we would treat that?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. I, like the rest of my colleagues, have, have had the phone calls, not a lot of emails on my side, but working in the district over the past good three to four weeks, I've heard a lot of the different stories and, and increases and what am I going to do and, and holy cow, how can they do that? I mean, we, we've heard it all. Just to put this into context for the district that I represent, ZIP Code 64053. Their average income is $33,490. The average house is $88,000. That is the extreme northwest side of Independence. Carlisle neighborhood, Mount Washington neighborhood, Fairmont. I have absolutely concluded, this county has acted absolutely recklessly, savagely against the citizens of Independence. And there is absolutely no reason that the constituents of this city, my district, should be trying to figure out, how am I going to pay the extra $2,500, $3,000 extra to pay property tax for something that is, is so disorganized and just not appropriate? So I am going to vote in favor for this. I am strongly encouraging the rest of my colleagues to do the same, that we can put our voice as strongly as, as we can to our county legislators and to our state representatives to try to get this resolved and get it to where it needs to be. Our citizens deserve it. Our city deserves it. And I'm just beside myself that we even have to deal with this, but here we are.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, just one more thing.
Sure. Please proceed.
You know, the, the actions that the, the county has taken was communicated in the media, but what our stance is is unprecedented. So in terms of standing, it is an unprecedented move for a municipality in the county to look to have some type of legal reconciliation or comfort. I get that. I, I'm not saying that there is standing. I don't know that, though, and none of us do. And until we ask the questions, I think we owe it to these people to, to make that unknown, an educational piece. There may be things that we may be able to push back on. Mr. Coover and I hope that you understand that what I'm asking you, I, I know is large and that word unprecedented has been used, but know that we, we trust you to go and look at this and, and stand and do the right thing for our people. So I, I want you to know I have faith you'll do that.
Anyone else for the discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
You know, as a lawyer, there's a, there's a real tendency, especially having done plaintiff's work, when somebody comes into your office and you evaluate a case, if somebody wants to sue somebody. If my council member walked in and said, "I want to sue the county," I would say, "Well, first thing you got to do is, is take a look at, do you have the right to sue that person or organization or whatever it may be?" And there are times when it may not look like you have the right or it may not feel like you have the right. And there are times when everything may point to the idea that you don't and sometimes you file a suit anyway. And I don't and would not say whether I have a legal opinion on this issue, uh, sitting here tonight, because there are issues that are important enough that you take the stand anyway. And my colleagues have said it better than I will right now, that the point should be made and needs to be made. Mr. Perkins and I share demographics as well as any two districts do. And $2,000 or $3,000 literally are our folks' utility bills. They're their food bills. They're their insurance or their gas, their gas for their car to go to work. And the statement in itself of this resolution, I will thank Councilmember Steinmeyer for and will be voting in favor of. So regardless of where we fall out on this, I certainly will be asking, at the end of the day, whatever the opinion is, that we make the legal opinion public if my council members agree and take whatever next steps we need to, as we can, to continue to stand up for all of us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to say I concur with my colleagues. I think this will be unanimous, but with no further discussion, we'll proceed. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 23-764 passes seven to zero. Now, that brings us to 23-765. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
A resolution imploring the Jackson County Executive to maintain assessed valuations for real property in Jackson County at their 2022 levels for calendar year 2023.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on this item? Please proceed.
I want to make a motion to amend one of the whereas's.
Okay.
One of the whereas's mentions that the last day to do the appeals is July the 10th. I just want to make a motion to amend that to July the 31st, since that is now changed.
Okay. And it has the, so your motion is to amend it, that the appeal process will be up until July 31st, if I'm hearing you correctly?
Yes. The county's since moved that to July 31st and this resolution states it was July the 10th.
Okay. We have a motion for an amendment. Is there a second to have this motion, this amendment proceed?
Second.
There is a motion and a second on this amendment. Is there any discussion on this amendment to recognize July 31st being the deadline for appeals of the county assessment process?
There will be another amendment, Mr. Mayor, so I think it'd be smoothest if we could vote on this one fairly quickly.
Okay. I just wanted to give everybody a chance to talk if they needed to.
Of course.
I, I agree with you. If there's no further discussion, I will honor your request, councilmember, and call the roll on this. Is there no further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the amendment as read, moving the date to July 31st, is approved seven to zero. Anyone else? Any other amendments or discussion points on this bill?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd like to propose an amendment adding Section 2. If the Jackson County Executive does not believe Section 1 is allowed under the authority of their office, the independent city council requests that the Jackson County Executive act within the responsibilities outlined in the Jackson County Charter to correct any errors in the calculation of assessed values of real property for the errors in the calculation of assessed values of real property for the twenty-twenty-three assessment period.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So we've got a motion and a second for Section Two to be amended, uh, basically saying that the, uh, county executive and his staff correct the errors, if I'm hearing it basically correctly. Okay? Could I steal a copy of the amendment? I would be grateful. I think it might be here and I might have missed it. It is here, please forgive me.
It's on the backside, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, I didn't look at it, thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment on Section Two? No further discussion? Going once, going twice, three times? All right, with that being said, we'll vote on the amendment on Section Two as proposed. Uh, Madam City Clerk, please call roll on the amendment.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the amendment in Section Two passes seven to zero. This brings us back to the entire bill unless there are any other amendments, and is there any discussion on the entire bill?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So I've, just like everybody else, I've heard from a bunch of different constituents. Um, you know, some are concerned they're going to lose their houses. Um, I heard from someone that, you know, she has a reverse mortgage and basically if she can't pay her property taxes, she'll either have to come up with the entire, you know, amount of money she owes in the house, or basically they'll take it. I'm asking this because of the, what I believe is inconsistencies in this assessment process. Uh, personally, my house went up ninety-three percent. I went to a BOE with a hearing officer, that didn't go well, and now I'm appealing it to the full Board of Equalization. I just, you know, a lot of people, they don't have time to take off work to do this. It's just, it's just kind of a mess. So basically what I'm asking is that the county basically just throw this out, go back to twenty-twenty-two. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? No further discussion. Uh, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And twenty-three, seven, seven, excuse me, twenty-three, seven, sixty-five passes seven to zero. And that brings us to twenty-three, seven, sixty-six. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A resolution directing the city manager to consult with Missouri level government employee retirement system, lagers.
Loggers.
Loggers.
That's okay.
Regarding the pensions for employees of Independence Power and Life who are members of IBW Level Fifty-three.
Thank you. And, uh, does anyone wish to have the floor on this item? Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, you know, in Independence, um, labor's an extremely important part of who we are and always has been, and the discussion on our public utility makes folks a little nervous, uh, me included. Uh, I, I am not a big, um, fan of, of even the discussion of selling, but should we, should you, it's a, as a public utility, decide that that's what you wish to do, um, then it's only fitting that, that our members of, of, um, IBW Fifty-three have a place at the table to rightfully discuss what happens to their members. This is all that we're asking for me, is a place at the table, should this action take place, so that they can rightfully talk and discuss and negotiate what happens to their members in the case of this situation. So I'm going to be supporting it. I think that it is something that brings some tensions down, some nervousness down, and rightfully so.
Any other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Um, so I, I fully understand concern by the, um, the union to the IBW folks about this, and I certainly understand, um, why, you know, we need to have discussions with them. The, the issue that I have in this regard at the moment is one of timing. Um, for me, the, the concern I have is that we are so early in the process of evaluating, I mean, we haven't even issued a RFQ yet, and we've issued the RFQ, we haven't decided on a vendor to help us through this process, let alone to, um, obtain any of the information that will be forthcoming, that we will need to evaluate to, uh, know how this impacts anyone, not only the union, but the non-bargaining union employees, the, the city as a whole, the residents, and it doesn't, we don't have any information on any of that at this point in time. And so I can't, um, in good conscience, uh, lift up one particular group of people to vote to, you know, take a stand in that regard without having any information to do so. And so I, because I don't know how this, uh, any of this is going to affect us going forward. So that's, uh, so I'll be voting no on this, and that's the reason, I want to explain that, uh, is the case. It's not that I don't want to, um, give, you know, support to that discussion or that process, or that I'm not, that I'm in any way unconcerned about our employees, it's just that I think there's a bigger question and we don't have enough information to even make this, um, base level of a decision at this time. So that's, uh, why I'll be voting that way.
Any further discussion?
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I made my statement earlier in the wrong section of the agenda, um, but I, I understand why people are concerned, um, but I'm, I'm with Councilmember Fears and really feel like this is the cart before the horse. Uh, we're gonna need to have many discussions, uh, and I just feel like we're not ready for this particular resolution at this time, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. Briefly, uh, the loo- the lawyer in me, uh, says there's lots of problems, it's too early, it's not, uh, the issue's not ripe. We certainly are a long way from the people of Independence voting on and deciding whether, what, what they're going to do with the electric utility. So we don't, this is not an issue we need to even worry about yet. Now, the kid, uh, Danny Hobart, that grew up in Independence, in a blue collar family with union grandpa and union uncles and working class people, they got free lunches and went to Luff Elementary and walked to school, uh, says that I understand that people that work for a living worry about their futures, and that matters. And, uh, there are safeguards built into this resolution, uh, and that sometimes is more important than the lawyer part. Sometimes being a person, uh, that cares about people is more important than being the lawyer. And that's the part that's going to vote tonight, so I will be voting in favor of this, and I hope it brings some peace, uh, to the folks that fixed our power last week, uh, after that storm, and, uh, that's how I'll be voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Any further discussion? Okay, uh, with no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
No.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
No.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the item passes five to two. This brings us to ordinances, uh, twenty-three, zero, five, eight, the second reading. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
An ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three budget, which was approved by ordinance number one-nine-three-four-zero.
Any further discussion on this item? Mr. Norris, could I just ask for kind of a very brief summary of this? Trying to refresh my memory.
Brief summary. These are mostly adjustments to revenue due to grant funds or, uh, higher-than-expected revenue coming in for the last fiscal year.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else other further discussions? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for twenty-three, zero, fifty-eight.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, twenty-three, zero, five, eight passes seven to zero. That brings us to twenty-three, zero, five, nine. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
An ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring temporary construction and grading easements and general utility easements for the Barnes Place Drainage Improvement Project, project number one-three-one-nine-zero-one, authorizing the negotiation and imminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project.
Any discussion on twenty-three, zero, five, nine? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Twenty-three, zero, five, nine passes seven to zero. That brings us to twenty-three, zero, six, oh.
An ordinance terminating tax increments financing within the Eastland Center Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Uh, may I address, uh, Mr. Norris, Acting City Manager?
Absolutely.
Uh, Mr. Norris, could you just briefly, uh, state what's happening here?
Yeah, we're closing out this TIF, and then the remaining pilot payments and those will be distributed back to the taxing jurisdictions in accordance with the TIF Act.
Did this, uh, did this TIF just end naturally? Is that what's going on?
We're, yes, and we're, yes, and we're terminating it now.
Very good, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three, zero, six, zero.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Twenty-three, zero, six, zero passes seven to zero. That brings us to twenty-three, zero, six, one. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
An ordinance amending Section three-point-zero, three-point-zero-zero-seven, aggressive dogs of the Independent City Code.
Any discussion on this? Uh, there were actually changes to this, and, uh, Councilmember Steinmeier, I agree with you on this, uh, I think you asked for a higher insurance limit, uh, they did check on that and they added that in, and so I just wanted to make sure that that was highlighted, that you asked for that and it was there, so. You bet. Anyone else other further discussions? Yeah, I will be voting for this tonight, but I will be letting all of you know that I'm gonna, I'm still doing some work on this and I would like to add some adjustments to it, so, uh, we'll be talking about that in the future, but I'd go through the process and probably take that through a study session and things like that. I just want to give you a heads up. Anybody else other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Uh, thank you very much. No, I've, uh, we had, I had, uh, we had discussed, um, uh, one or two other changes as well that they're also working on, so there are still some others in the works.
Right.
So, thank you.
You bet. Anyone else?
Mayor, just to be clear, the, the changes that have been made so far, including the increase in insurance that was distributed to you all, that wasn't part of the original version that was in the packet, uh, so those changes would need to be made to the ordinance prior to being adopted.
So do we need to add amendments to that now?
Correct.
So do we need a motion on that?
You would need a motion and a vote on...
Each of the amendments?
Well, you, you can do them individually, or you could do them...
As it was distributed?
As it was distributed, if every, if everyone is in agreeance on voting that way, yes.
Okay. Uh, can we have a motion to...
Mr. Mayor.
Approve this as, as it was distributed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the, uh, amendments to... Ordinance three-dot-zero, three-dot-zero-zero-seven as distributed in, uh, excuse me, I'd move to approve the amendments as distributed in ordinance number two-three-dash-zero-six-one of Section three-dot-zero-three-dot-zero-zero-seven in the municipal code.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We've got a motion and a second to, uh, to amend twenty-three, zero, sixty-one as amended in the distribution copy. If everyone's good with the distribution copy, we can certainly have a discussion on it, and any discussion on the amended version that was distributed to all of us? Seeing no discussion, we need to vote, Mr. Culver, if I'm correct, on the amended version, and then actually then vote on the ordinance itself.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I just want to clarify that for process sake. So with that being said, we'll just vote on the amended version at this point, then we'll vote for the final ruling, uh, on the bill, then, uh, so if there's no discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendments, please.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the amendments on twenty-three, zero, sixty-one as distributed is approved seven to zero. That brings us to the discussion of the main bill itself. Uh, any discussion on that? No further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call roll on the second read for twenty-three, zero, six, one.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and twenty-three, zero, six, one is approved, seven to zero. Uh, that brings us to first reads, and Madam City Clerk, if you can just read all of the first reads, and that'll bring us to information only, and then Councilmember comments, so I'll let you proceed on all of them.
Twenty-three, oh, six, two, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of one million, fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of DRE conference fees and overtime programs for the Police Department for impaired driving enforcement and youth alcohol liquor compliance checks from October first, twenty-twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, authorizing future change orders and/or time extensions for the same project and making the necessary appropriations. Twenty-three dash zero-six-three, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of four hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars from the Missouri Department of Transportation for the reimbursement for a Bosch CDR upgrade kit, an enclosed cargo trailer, let-sack conference fees, and an overtime program for hazardous moving violations enforcement from October first, twenty-twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, authorizing future change orders, extension, amendments, addendums for additional funding for the same project and making the necessary appropriations. Twenty-three dash zero-six-four, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of one hundred thousand, six hundred and twenty-five from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for occupant protection enforcement programs from October first, twenty-twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, or addendums for additional funding for the same project and making the necessary appropriations. Twenty-three dash zero-six-five, an ordinance amending Chapter One, Article sixteen, Board of Ethics of the Independent City Code. Twenty-three dash zero-six-six, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide financial assistance for the Public Emergency Preparedness Grant Program for the period of July first, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, accepting funds for the period in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions for the same project and authorizing certain future appropriations. Twenty-three dash zero-six-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a certain grant agreement with the... with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for the Truman Connected Phase One Project, project number 112102, federal project number STP 3301524.
Thank you very much. This brings us to council member comments. Councilmember Stewart, would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, I would just like to say that I learned that over the weekend, we had a member of our audience that celebrated a kind of a milestone birthday, so I'm hoping he doesn't get mad at me, but I would just like to wish Bob Sorensen happy birthday. And I guess he got a big surprise party this weekend, quite the, quite the shindig, so. And then also, I just want to thank, you know, the members of Independence Power and Light that were out from the storm, I know they were out late, working long hours, and I think they did a heck of a job, so that's all I have, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember, would you like to proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, Mr. Montgomery, it's been real. Forty years is a long time, that would put me 11 when you started, so that's, that's good stuff right there. Thank you for always picking up the phone, open door when I had the questions and you always had a good answer and good response to, to you and your team, but you're not the only one retiring, Karen Kelly, forty years too, that's a long time as well, so pass on our, our congratulations to, to both of you for that, so thank you for your service, very much so. Second, under information only, number three, termination of the development agreement between Comprehensive Mental Health and the City of Independence, I think this is worthy of conversation and discussion and, and I'm gonna ask, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, that our deputy city manager, acting city manager, Adam Norris, speak to that a little bit, then I'll, may have some comments later.
Sure.
Sure, so a few years ago, we entered into a development agreement with Comprehensive Mental Health to develop a property off of 39th Street adjacent to Center Point, was city-owned, city-owned property. As part of that development agreement, there are clawback provisions in there that if the property doesn't properly develop within 24 months or doesn't start within 24 months, then it reverts back to the city. Unfortunately, Comprehensive Mental Health has not proceeded with that project, we had a discussion with the leadership of the, of Comprehensive a few months ago and they indicated they are not proceeding with that project at this point in time, so that's where it stands. We've been, now we've been reimbursed for, we did some preliminary survey work as part of getting the site ready and we've been fully reimbursed for our costs associated with that now.
If I may...
Please proceed.
Thank you. I mean, so the importance of this, I want our citizens to know that we as a council, we as a city are taking the mental health, our homeless issue, serious. We had reached out to Comprehensive Mental Health to be a partner, we had went through the complete agreement, they have not lived up to their agreement, maybe a little bit more hard than, than you are, Mr. Norris, it's a complete disappointment, this was going to be a crisis center, we were going to donate the land, I believe, so this can, can be done, they have, obviously have not pursued that. So next steps, Councilwoman McCandless and I, with Zach Walker, have met with different groups that were within the metro, Restart is one of them, to how, how can we bring partners into our community to help tackle this? So please understand that we are working on this, we have got to find the right partners who are willing to stand beside us and do it, so thank you for that information and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinmeier? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. I, yeah, I just, I want to wish Dan a happy retirement, I guess happy trails to you, is that, are we supposed to sing that? So as you ride off into the sunset, I hope that you have enjoyed your time in this city, I know you have, thank you for your service to our community and more than anything, go have fun, you deserve it, so wonderful time. I want to also thank the representatives who showed up tonight to be in support of, not a resolution, but a view, the greatest asset of this state sits in this room, the greatest asset of this county sits in this room, and you are absolutely the greatest asset of this city and it is a privilege to serve you. We will continue to be vigilant, we want you to know and I, and we want you to become advocates for your assets, and it takes all of us, it really does, and there's much to be done, much to be done, to my surprise, and so we're committed to not just working on what we can do on our side, but I'm committed to continuing the effort to work with Representative McMullin and any of the other state reps, I, I reached out to three and he showed up, so I was glad to, to have that time with him and, and I know that as, as the state gets involved in this discussion, I'm going to expect that we, we play above the game and we come up with real solutions for everyone in this state, especially in this county and in this town. So thank you for being here tonight, thank you for being vigilant and let's, let's keep up the good work on that side of it. On the other side too, I, I rode with IPD the other day and we went to some homeless camps and looked at the, just what we're dealing with there and we've got work to do and my big concern in the midst of all of it is not with just the mental health and the veteran services, but what's coming is the food insecurity issue, and so we're going to continue to work on that and if you have any ideas, any suggestions, please feel free to email me or call me, I'd love to discuss it with you, but other than that, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate this, all I have.
Thank you. Councilman McCandless?
I just wanted to give a shout out to the Jackson County legislators who came to a room full of 400 people who weren't very happy, fielded questions, actually did a very nice job in what was a very steamy room. Our legislator Smith was there and, and a bunch of others, I know a number of the city council members here attended, it's hard to be in that hot seat, so I will tell you that they hear loud and clear the concerns of the citizens, I think they're trying to explore every opportunity for coming up with a resolution, these are sticky problems and so I just wanted to give them a shout out for that. It's also nice to celebrate things that are going well, sometimes we just talk about challenges up here, for the City of Independence, one year ago, we issued 601 new business license and this year, 683, so it's nice to be able to celebrate new businesses coming into the city, a real opportunity for us in our continued growth, so thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hobart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, Mr. Montgomery, I, Dan, I had to, I got inspired, I started looking up what happened in July of 1983, so "Every Breath You Take" by The Police was the number one song, "Return, Return of the Jedi" was the number one movie and Tom Watson won his fifth British Open Championship, so it's been a while, my friend, good work and Godspeed and good luck. Councilmember Perkins, man, it feels like a lifetime ago when we thought we were going to get that mental health facility built and I remember how fast we thought that HCA was going to be the problem in getting that contract signed and Brett Coleman somehow got their big bosses in Tennessee or Kentucky or wherever that was to sign off on that thing in about six months and I can't tell you how disappointed I am in that. What, what a letdown, seems like we scratch and claw for every inch on mental health and houselessness and we'll, we'll just keep doing it, I suppose, so thank you for that and thank you, Councilmember McCandless, for carrying that torch for us. Excellent, excellent work from both of you and, and all, everybody that's working on that, for sure. Anyway, thanks, Mr. Norris, for filling in for Mr. Walker this week and sure sorry for all the folks with their property taxes, I guess me included. Mr. McMullin, thanks for coming out, we don't get a lot of state reps here in these parts, genuinely appreciate that, thank you, and for the reps that are here and the other folks that came tonight. Mr. Sorensen, I'm going to say, I know you liked your warehouse job, happy birthday, by the way, but there's $495,000, $119 if you want to go ahead and get back on that bike and run some radar, so, you know, it, it will probably pay better than your warehouse job and be just as hot, so, just in case. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're quite welcome. I just got a couple of comments I'd like to thank, take a moment to thank the city staff that responded to the storms this past weekend. Oh, please, Councilmember Fears, my deep regrets, your time has expired. You know I'm teasing, please go ahead.
All right, thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, I'm coming from you, coming tonight from about two hours southwest of Osceola, Missouri at scout camp, most of you probably know it's no longer boy scout camp, it's scout camp, we have girls and boys here and it's a worthwhile endeavor, I'm on staff down here for the next, starting yesterday, for the next 10 days and I know we have roughly 11 units, 11 troops here from Independence and so that's a good showing for, for Independence and Blue Elk District and just happy to be here and be able to connect in this way and not have to drive home for the, the event. I, I share the, the concerns about the tax assessments, I'm affected like everyone else is, although my house was in far different shape than it was, I, I had a 1,900% increase in my tax rate, now that was because it was a vacant, mostly demolished house before I started building a new house two years ago when they last assessed, so I do understand that, that things are different, but, but still, it, it's really a, a difficult situation and, and one I'll probably be coming home for, for a Board of Equalization appeal. Want to give a shout out to Dan Montgomery as well, I was actually working for the city when Dan and, when, when the city purchased the water department and Dan came along with that and I got a chance actually at that time to work with Dan to help some of that transition and we've been friends ever since and so, Dan, best of luck to you and thank you for all your years of service. I too appreciate the, those that were out working on the storm damage, I got several calls and I know folks were out and I know people, it is difficult to be patient when, when you're out of power, but I, I know that we try to address those needs on a priority basis and so I know that folks worked hard to get that done. And lastly, last week, I believe it was Thursday night, we attended a event where Councilmember McCandless and city manager and one of the school district...
Auntie M'dane?
School district directors and our chief of police were able to, they attended a civil rights events and they, they talked about that last Thursday and that was very interesting and very eye-opening and so just wanted to say I appreciate their efforts for that and the, the work that they did to prepare for that, it was, you know, that's not easy necessarily trying to share some of those heartfelt experiences and show them in a way that would be easily understood and, and kind of be able to understand the implications for those of us that, that didn't attend there, so appreciate that and, other than that, we're getting storms down this way, we've had now three, so we, we hope that you don't get any more up there, so, all right, that's all I got, Mr. Mayor, and thank you.
And again, my apologies, please forgive my oversight. So I'd just like to take a moment to thank the many staff members that responded to the storm this past weekend, to our Independence Power and Light crews, the mutual aid teams that joined us, our dispatchers, our emergency management teams, our municipal services, communication teams, you did a great job and thank you for that, for the countless hours that you worked to restore the power, to keep our citizens safe, to keep all of us informed and begin the cleanup process and to Acting City Manager Norris, you kept me informed all weekend long with text and I appreciate that, 2:00 AM was probably not needed, but the other ones were, so thank you. Also, regarding the cleanup, we've got more damage to pick up this week and, but once again, the storm showed the power of our community and neighbors helping neighbors. So finally, as a reminder that I said earlier, we're holding a storm cleanup or drop-off depot Wednesday, July 19th, which is just two days away, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, then Saturday, the 22nd, which is this upcoming Saturday, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at 875 Vista Avenue for our residents, if you live in Kansas City, I apologize. I also wanted to talk about the mayor's trash pickup on Saturday, I will be honest with you, I never thought I would say this, with the trash that we saw in the city when we, when we all started running and been over here, we went to Bunshu Park to pick it up, we got there, it was so clean, we actually had to go to I-7, well, not I-70, we went to Sterling and 40 Highway to pick up trash there, we were not disappointed that time, so it was a target-rich environment, but we did pick it up there, so I want to give a shout out to Councilmember McCandless, your program, Independence Together is doing a great job, last I heard, 100,000 pounds of trash has been picked up, so leave me some next time, okay, just a little bit. I also did a police ride along this last week with Officer Conley, he did a great job, he taught me so much about the police department and what they do, so please tell Officer Conley he did a great job, I was incredibly impressed, an outstanding officer, we're lucky to have him serving our city. He also took me by a hotel and this is for you, Acting City Manager Norris, you know my affection for video lottery machines, you've heard me before, right? Well, we need to talk about that because there is a hotel there that had several video lottery machines and we need to address that, so, and I will be happy to go on the codes ride on that one, so we'll do that. Then, you know, I am so glad, Councilmember Fears, that you mentioned this, I too worked with Dan Montgomery, you started in 83, is that correct? I started in 81, so I just beat you by a little bit, but I didn't stay with the city, so there we go, you probably made the starter's choice, but anyway, we want to thank you for your work and it's a great friendship and keep everything up, you know, and now I hope Diane has got an extensive to-do list for you tomorrow morning, does she have one? I've got some suggestions, have her call me. All right, with that being said, Mr. Norris, do you have any comments you'd like to close this session with?
Just want to thank our staff and I thank you all for recognizing the team, whenever we have a storm, a snow, you know, a snow event, whatever it is, it, you know, it's a shift for, for almost our entire organization and it's a team effort and I'd put this team up against just about anybody, so, thank you.
Great job, well done, with that, we'll call the meeting adjourned, thank you.